All right, it's six o'clock. I'm going to call to order the Apache Junction Unified School District's November 25th, 2025 Governing Board Regular Meeting. We'll begin with roll call attendance. Mrs. Ross?
Present.
Mrs. Williamson?
Present.
Mrs. Garcia?
Present.
Mrs. Lean?
Present.
And on present, all board members are in attendance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence in remembrance of Officer Russell Duncan.
(inaudible)
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move items 6.7 and 6.8 executive session to the top for action items.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Mrs. Ross?
I said second.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And I'm yes, that motion passes five to zero. We need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Mrs. Ross, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And I'm yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto board meeting minutes not previously approved. I just want to have a little discussion. I talked to Dr. Popolardo about our board meeting minutes, and he agreed that it would be a good idea for our work session minutes and our regular minutes. After they're approved, that they be emailed out to the staff so that they are aware of what's going on at our meetings. So I thought that was really good that Dr. Popolardo wanted to do that. Any other discussion on the minutes?
I agree with you. I know in the past, we used to email them out to staff the next day.
Right.
So they were updated on everything. So I think that's a great idea to continue that.
Right. I think it's a good way to make sure that everybody's getting the information.
What?
They'll be weeks behind.
It'll be behind, once it's approved.
Three weeks. Yeah, because this is the past. Now the minutes that is being discussed now.
Right.
So would we be?
So they would have to be approved first before they're sent out.
So that's a month behind.
But at least they'll get them.
Right. They'll still get them.
Right.
Well, in the past, when we had the meetings, didn't we just do, didn't we have that immediately sent out to staff? Just explain. I'm trying to follow.
It's not the minutes. It was a summary.
We could do.
The PR will make a summary and send it to the staff.
Yes.
Last of the four minutes.
Right.
Okay.
So the PR has to make a summary of what was discussed the night before and send it to the staff.
Right. So as long as we're getting the information out to staff of what is occurring in the meeting. So we can work on that with Dr. Popolardo, whether it's the full minutes or a summary. But I think it's something that we need to do. All right, would somebody like to make a motion on the minutes?
I need clarification. So typically, if we have a board meeting right now, the very next day, our PR in the past would send a summary out to the staff of what the board has voted on. Is that what we're saying, or are we talking about something different?
Well, we were originally talking about the approved minutes being sent out, and I know PR was going to add those to her newsletter as well.
Would we be able to have that out to the staff so they know what's going on, or was there a reason why?
Do you want it as the minutes approved, or just a summary?
It's a really good question, right? If the minutes are approved, then they're accurate, because they're always in a draft form before you say so, right? Because we've had times where you have corrected it up here.
Right.
It's better that they have accurate information as timely as that we can get it to them would be the preferred method.
Okay.
But that's three weeks, that's a month behind.
Yeah. They don't get them.
It's not the current one.
So how could we make it to where we have the board meeting, and then the PR gives the information to the staff almost immediately or days later? How could that take place?
It'd have, we couldn't do that until it was transcribed, and we'd have to look at the transcript so we could make a summary.
How long does it take to transcribe?
Two to three days.
But you can't really dispose it to the staff when it's not been approved by the board.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying. In the past, we had snippets. The PR will do snippets of what was approved.
Right.
And send it to.
The staff.
The staff the following day.
Correct.
But it's not the whole minutes that we're sending it to them.
Right. That's what I'm asking is.
It's snippets of what was discussed and approved.
Right.
It's not the full content of the minutes.
Right. Just the approval part.
Correct. So could we do that, Dr. Popolardo, so the staff is apprised with our PR doing that?
We can try that. It will be cumbersome to get that, because there will be lots of discussion and lots of things to cross out, but we can try.
I just think it's important, because I know in the past, when we've had that done with the summary, staff is apprised of what's really happening with the board and getting accurate information, like the very next day or days later. And if we have our PR, is she here tonight?
Yep.
Okay, so if she's here, and we can talk about possibly doing that, at least the staff will know what happened the night before, especially on important topics, and they'll just get the summary.
Good.
I just think it's important to get that information out.
Immediately.
Well, immediately or some, one way or another, so that staff is aware of what's going on in the minutes.
Because if we're talking about something that's really important to staff, I think that having just a summary to them, just the gist of it the very next day or the day after with our PR that we should be utilizing, I think that's important.
Okay.
No, I agree with that, only because as an employee, as a teacher, half of my emails I delete, because there's a lot of junk emails. So if we could, because if I got information that was a month later, it wouldn't make any sense, but if we could get a summary, that would be awesome.
Well, and if we want, we could still send out the approved minutes.
Attach. Yeah, do both. Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we could do the summary, and then when the minutes are approved, send them out.
I like that.
Okay. Mrs. Ross, anything?
Nope.
Nope. Mrs. Williamson, any comments on that?
Nope.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion on minutes?
So do you want me to motion that with the summary?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Just approve the minutes.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion on October, to approve the minutes on October 28th regular meeting, November 4th work session, and November 17th, 2025 board retreat minutes.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Mrs. Ross, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And I'm yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto information-only items. 2.1 Governing Board Members' Report. Who wants to start? Mrs. Ross?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Mrs. Williamson?
I actually was super excited that last week, Friday, I got to meet up with Dina, and we went to the high school and attended the Christian Courage Club. There was over 230 students there. It was amazing. It was just really good to see just all the kids there and what was going on. I really enjoyed that. Like to really give recognition to the student that stood up on the stage and actually spoke to these over 230 students, because that takes a lot of courage. His name is John Beltran. So that was really good, just to see how God is working in all these kids at the school. I really enjoyed that.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Mrs. Garcia?
Okay, so first of all, thank you, Mrs. Kimball and Dr. Popolardo for allowing us. For those of you who are not aware, when we did the honor of Mr. Russell, Duncan Russell, he was a police officer back in 1983. His kids went to school here, and so since we did the remembrance for Officer Fazio, I had asked that we did the same thing in the month of November to find it appropriate. He was an officer in Apache Junction, and he served for five months before his tragedy happened, and all of three of the girls came to Apache Junction, so that's the reason why we had that up, just a little bit of information for you guys. And then I had the honor of doing senior interviews. I can't remember if this is my ninth or my 10th year doing the senior interviews, but I interviewed six seniors, and I just wanted to kind of call out some of the things that the students pointed out about their teachers. So I had two students that were in the drama class, and a few of the students talked about Mr. Lanfeer. They said that they make him, they made them feel, he always makes them feel special, and that he, this year, had made homemade shirts for them for the play, the cast and the crew, and he's just always fun with them and open and just really acts like he cares. And so I wanted to thank him for that, because there was just a couple of students that pointed that out, and some of them expressed that they're, sometimes when they're at home and they're troubled, and they come to school, and we have a teacher like him, it really makes their day go better. So that was one of my notes. Ironically, he's here tonight for Student of the Month, so that was good. And then Mrs. Moffett, Mr. and Mrs. Matlos, and Mr. Reyes, they also said that they're very kind and caring and always helpful, and that they're happy to be here at Apache Junction when they're students, that are able to come to school with the teachers that care about them. So I wanted to point that out, and other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Mrs. Garcia. And Mrs. Lean?
I think we went to the East Valley School Board Consortium since last meeting, right? So that was my excursion this month.
Okay.
It was fun to watch, like, the presenter and to get to talk to the other school board members, so.
Yes. All right, and so from my report, I attended the Christian Courage Club with Mrs. Williamson, and it was pretty amazing to see the amount of students there. I attended the Rotary Fundraiser Casino Night. It was very fun. I won an iron. I'm going to be gifting that for Christmas. What was nice about it is that all the proceeds, the benefits, the Apache Junction Youth Programs and Student Backpack Food Program, so that was really nice. I was also honored and privileged to be invited to the Dotty London by Dana from our Pinell County Recorder for Public Service of Excellence. That was very, it was an honor for me to be invited to that, and it was at the Windmill Winery, which is very nice. So that was exciting, and that's all I got. So we're going to move on to the Superintendent Report. Dr. Popolardo?
Madam President, members of the board, community, staff, and students. A few things this month. Attended the Reimagining High School Conference last week. Attended the Boys and Girls Club of America Arizona Conference. Big shout-out tonight to Peralta Trail Elementary School. Their staff stayed with the kids because their US-60 was closed, has just reopened a little bit ago. Served them breakfast for dinner, but, okay, so those guys will be late. High school sports. Flag football, we have some all-region second-team members. In flag football, it's Jade Schuster and Belle Winn. We had a state qualifier in cross-country, Wyatt Shively. In football, all-region second-team, we had Don Brigham, Luca Pepe, and Mikhail Hoffman. And for the first time in a long time, we have an AJHS Cheer Girls Stunt Performance Team. They competed at the AIA Championship, and they're Ellery Brennan, Kayden Broomer, Tinsley Stickel, and Sedona Steele. So congratulations to all of us, and that concludes that part of the report. So now let's get on to the good stuff.
The good stuff.
So we'll do the staff and student recognition.
Okay.
Okay, let's begin that.
Welcome. Is it working?
Hello.
Oh, she got it.
Good evening, Madam President, Governing Board Members, Dr. Popolardo, family members, and colleagues. My name is Aubrey Jackson, and I am the Academic and Behavior Interventionist at Four Peaks. With me is Kelly Stimson, our Office Assistant to the Principal. I will be speaking on behalf of Principal Broxma, who is unable to attend tonight. It is now my privilege to recognize this year's Four Peaks Certified Staff of the Year, Manuel Marmel, also known as Manny. Manuel is a dedicated, hard-working young man who serves our night, at nights, as our night custodian, and he has been an important part of our Four Peaks for nearly three years. In that time, he has become someone we can always count on. He is dependable, focused, and committed to doing his very best every single day. One of many examples of Manny's work ethic is his dedication to his work and his job. Mrs. Broxma tried to talk to him into taking the night off so he can enjoy this special recognition with his family, and he still chose to come to work, but came here for just a little bit. That alone speaks volumes about his work ethic and his loyalty to our school. Our staff describes Manny as, "He is always willing to help set up for school events and offer support to staff members." Another shared, "Manny has spent many days working on his own, and he does this without hesitation or complaint." Manuel, thank you for your unwavering dedication, your positive attitude, and the pride you take in everything you do. You are a truly valued member of Four Peaks Elementary School family, and we are grateful for all the ways you support our staff and students. Congratulations on being named Four Peaks Classified Staff of the Year. Once again, it's my honor to recognize this year's Four Peaks Certified Staff of the Year, Patricia Hayward, also known as Trish.[1056.13][1056.13](applause) Trish is the definition of dedication. She has served the Apache Junction School District for an incredible 31 years, pouring her heart, talent, and passion into every classroom she has touched. One of the most remarkable joys of teaching this long is seeing former students return to the district not as children, but as colleagues, and Trish has experienced that a few times, a testament to the lasting impact she has made. Trish brings patience, creativity, and unwavering determination to her work. She is not only an exceptional educator, but also a trusted mentor and colleague. Over the years, I have watched her take on some of the most challenging situations and face them head-on with compassion, grace, and genuine love for students. Her colleagues describe her beautifully. Trish has an extremely challenging class and handles each student with patience. Trish, thank you for your years of dedication, your resilience, and the steady, caring presence you bring to Four Peaks every single day. You have changed countless lives, inspired future educators, and strengthened this community It is my honor to recognize Four Peaks Volunteer of the Year, Cody Huffer.[1145.83][1145.83](applause) This is Cody's second year serving on our PTO and our first year as president. She's the proud parent of two children in our dual-language Kinder and our first-grade program, and her commitment to our school is seen in everything she does. Cody's talents are seen in action in many ways. She leads fundraisers, plans festivals, coordinates before and after-school events, or finds new ways to bring our community together. Cody pours her heart into Four Peaks to help our students, staff, and families together. Our staff describes her best. Cody goes above and beyond to make the staff feel appreciated. Another shared, "She is so talented and so helpful. She's always willing to lend a hand in my classroom." Cody, thank you for your dedication, your passion, and the countless ways you lift up our school. All right. Madam President, Governing Board Members, Dr. Popolardo, family members, and colleagues. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you two of our Four Peaks outstanding students in character and academics. Our first student, I do believe she is sick, and she won't be here, but I still want to talk about her, Giovanna Ricobono. I would like to invite, well, she's not up here. Giovanna is a fifth-grade student at Four Peaks. Mrs. Mortensen says, "It's been such a pleasure to be able to watch Gia in advanced mathematics for last year and this year. She's always willing to go higher and higher with her learning, never wanting a ceiling to stop her. Gia has such a strong foundational base of mathematics and can always be counted on to use that base to work on her higher-order thinking math tasks. One can often find her sketching a complex drawing while completing her math tasks. She can do both to perfection. I am proud to see you with this award, Gia. Congratulations." Mr. Shaw says, "Gia's enthusiasm for challenges knows no bounds. She embraces the process of learning, never seeking shortcuts and utilizing all resources available. Her persistent effort has led to massive growth despite already being in commanding position. With her mindset, she has no boundaries, other than what she wants to decide to put in front of herself." I'd like to recognize Giovanna for outstanding academic achievement in our recent AASA assessment. She earned a perfect score of 100% on the math portion of the test. All of us at Four Peaks congratulate her on this deserved recognition."[1375.46][1375.46](applause) I would like to invite Cashden Tricelary up front.[1385.54][1385.54](applause) Cashden Tricelary is an exceptional fifth-grade student who truly deserves to be recognized as Student of the Month. He is bright, hard-working, and consistently demonstrates strong academic skills across all subjects. Cashden is not only an excellent student, but a leader on our campus, proudly serving as President of the Student Council. He approaches every task with positivity and maturity, and he is a wonderful role model for his peers. We are incredibly proud of him and grateful to have him represent our school. Mr. Shaw says, "Cashden is a cool cat in the game of education. I can never quite gauge his exact understanding in a given moment, but I do know when his gears are turning. He never ceases to follow through and impress. From continual improvements to test domination, he figures it out in the end. His combination of goofiness, patience, and brilliance make him someone worth pausing a moment for someone deserving of this award." Congratulations to Cashden for an incredible academic accomplishment. Not only did he earn a perfect score of 100% on the AASA Math Assessment last school year, but this marks his second consecutive year of achieving a perfect score in math."[1464.23][1464.23](applause) Cashden's consistent excellence is a testament to his hard work, focus, and passion for learning. His achievement sets a powerful example for his classmates and shows what dedication can accomplish. We are so proud of you, Cashden. Now I would like to introduce the Principal of the Academy, Brett Bitterman.[1489.13][1489.13](applause)
Thank you very much. From fourth grade and the academy is Judith Breton. Come on up.[1512.96][1512.96](applause) Judith is a fourth grader in Mr. Weeby's fourth-grade class. Judy, as he calls you, this is all from him, is always the first to offer help, share a supportive word, and treat everyone with respect. We also see how wonderful a big sister she is, qualities in class, as she is patient, leads by example, and models a beautiful example of kindness and wisdom to her classmates. Judy is responsible and a natural leader who looks out for others. Judy is a smart, kind, and positive scholar in our classroom, and we are thankful to have her in our class and on our campus, and we look forward to seeing her continue to lead other students by her virtuous actions. Great job, Judy.[1560.46][1560.46](applause) All right, Mr. Aron, come on up, buddy. He is way too cute for all of us.
Too cute.
Hi, sweetie. You can stand right over there. Aron Gomez Benito, he is a kindergartner in Ms. Jones's class. Aron is a wonderful student who always tries his best in everything he does. He has made so much progress this year and continues to impress his teacher with his hard work and determination. Aron is kind, respectful, and always willing to lend a helping hand. He often helps his classmates and even translates for students who don't speak English, showing great leadership and compassion. Aron always uses his manners in class and sets a great example for others with his polite and positive attitude. He also excels in PE. His amazing athleticism and teamwork make him stand out. It's kind of like Mr. Bitterman. I stand out with my athleticism as well. We may have a future sports superstar on our hands. Aron is always the first to offer help when someone needs it and treats everybody with kindness. I'm so happy to have him in my class. Whoever I want, that's awesome.[1641.32][1641.32](laughing) From Desert Vista, Ms. Kelly Phant.[1644.32][1644.32](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Bitterman. All right. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Popolardo, community, colleagues, and family, I am Kelly Phant, Principal of Desert Vista. I am honored to present two of Desert Vista's exceptional second-grade students tonight for recognition, and our first Mustang is right up here in the front row. It is Kalisi Singleton.[1671.13][1671.13](audience cheering) So Kalisi is truly a sweet and joyful Mustang. One of her favorite things about Desert Vista is all the playgrounds. She couldn't choose just one, where she loves to spend her time playing and exploring. In PE, she especially enjoys the rock climbing wall. If you haven't got a chance to see her rock climbing wall, come visit it. It's amazing. She's also an avid reader. She loves using Epic, which is an online program to help dive into new books, and she loves that it can read the books to her. And she shared that she's excited to get a cell phone soon, and when I asked her why, she said the main idea is so she can call Papa John's. I'm just putting it out there.[1716.13][1716.13](laughing) You might want to make sure she doesn't have a credit card attached to anything. So her sense of humor is definitely shining through with that. She's at home, she also enjoys watching Henry Danger. I'm getting ready to give up one of your secrets here, Kalisi. And she joked that if she watches it before her sister, she blames robbers for doing it, that robbers are coming into the house and watching the show and nothing else. So. She's been a proud Mustang since kindergarten, and her favorite teacher so far has been Ms. Williams, which was one of her first-grade teachers. And outside of the classroom, she stays active. She's been in cheer for three years and also plays basketball. And her teacher says that she stands out not only for academic excellence, but also for her character. She treats others with respect, helps peers without being asked, and always strives to improve. It's students like Kalisi who remind me why I do what I do in education. We are so glad to have Kalisi as part of our Desert Vista family. So congratulations, Kalisi.[1777.23][1777.23](applause) And our second incredible Mustang is Remington Nurek.[1788.01][1788.01](applause) It's going to be hard to see it right now, but Remington is fun and energetic. Once he- Once he gets over his shyness, he brings a lot of joy to Desert Vista. One of his favorite parts of the school day, snack time. Especially when his teacher provides the juice boxes. He also loves PE, and his favorite game to play is tag. He was trying to explain to me this weird turkey tag thing that they were playing the other day, and I was so confused. And of course, that's when he gets to run and have fun with his friends and actually put a smile on his face, which we're not going to do tonight. When it comes to reading, one of his favorite picks is the classic Ms. Nelson Is Missing. If you haven't read it, read it, please. It's a good one. Outside of school, he enjoys going over to his cousin's house where the two of them love to roll down hills. I asked him, I'm like, "Please make sure there are no cactus or anything, because that would make for a bad day." He has a loyal German Shepherd named Wyatt, and he's been part of the Desert Vista since kindergarten as well. His favorite teacher was his kindergarten teacher, Ms. Edwards, who clearly made a positive impact on him. And he's a true athlete. He stays active. He does baseball, football, basketball, making him a very well-rounded and spirited student both in out of the classroom. His teacher says that he stands out for his kindness and willingness to help classmates. He's always trying his best, works hard on every assignment, and sets a great example for others through their positive attitude and teamwork. So we are proud to have both of these remarkable students as part of our Desert Vista family. So congratulations to you both. So now I think I'd like to bring up Mr. Paperman, Principal of Cactus Canyon.
Good evening, Madam President, School Board, Dr. Popolardo, families, students, colleagues, community members. This is a fun time of the month. Each month is Doing Students of the Month. We get to see our, not just the best and brightest, but the best leaders and the kids that are nicest to each other on campus. So we have two Students of the Month. The first one is Delaney Garcia. I don't see her here. So I think we'll save this to next month. And the second is Jackson Mulvey. So there's some messages from his teachers and then some a little bit about him as well. So, "His effort and respect for others make him a role model in the classroom. He truly deserves the recognition as Student of the Month. Congratulations. All his peers in PE enjoy being around him, having him on their team and in their groups. He always comes to class prepared and ready to give his best effort. Great kid to be around," from Coach Kim. "Jackson is always such a pleasure to have in class. He's always willing to help others and leads by example. He has such a desire to learn and to be successful in and out of the classroom. Congratulations, Jackson. You deserve it." Jackson, sorry. A lot of teachers really wanted to write about him today, so. "Jackson was a delight in my student teaching class, and to no surprise, he had continued to be a delight since entering 6th grade. He's a true role model for his classmates," by Ms. Chambers. So some personal things about Jackson. His favorite subject in school is math. He really feels like he does really well in that class. His hobbies are sports like football and other outdoor activities. That also includes his extracurriculars. He would like to be an engineer, and his favorite food is Chicken Alfredo with pasta. Congratulations, Jackson. And up next, we have the fabulous Ms. Gin, Principal over at AJHS.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Popolardo, Governing Board. Hello, community. It is my privilege to share with you two outstanding high school students this evening, and I will call up Janet Lampier first. Come on up. Janet is a 10th grader at Apache Junction High School. Her favorite subject is this year, English, because my teacher is great and I learn a ton. Hobby and activity, she enjoys sports such as cross-country cheer and soccer, and I think you just came from soccer practice, right? Yes. All right, hopefully you have a Kleenex in your pocket for this next one. So somebody who inspires you and how? She says, "My dad, because he does so much for his job and our family. He just keeps going, even if it's a crappy day. He's my best friend and truly the definition of a hard worker." If you could have any superpower, what would it be and why? Either the ability to stop time or a teleportation, because I want to be able to be places or do things without the worry of time. I love that. All right, a hidden talent or fun fact about you is she can play many instruments and paint. Oh my goodness, we made you cry. I'm used to making people laugh, not cry. You did this. All right, let's see if I can make it any more weird. All right, someone at school has made a positive impact on you, my boyfriend. Is he here? No. My boyfriend, because he is caring and always uplifting. He is a kind person, not only to me, but others. Advice you'd give to other students to be successful? Do extracurriculars, even if you think you won't be good, and don't stress too much as well. All right, one teacher comment here for Ms. Janet. Janet is a joy to have in class. She's always positive and attacks each day with a smile and enthusiasm, except right now. She is the type of student that others want to be around because she is an energy giver, and they like to be uplifted by her and her positive attitude. You are a hard worker in the classroom and in your extracurricular activities. Congratulations, Janet. I'm proud to be your principal. All right, next I'd like to call up Gabriel Mendoza. One interesting thing about the two Students of the Month that we have this month is they're both extremely positive, positive people all the time. Gabe is a 12th grader at the high school. His favorite subject in school is AP Environmental Science. Hobby he enjoys outside of school, fishing. Someone who inspires you and how? Lamar Jackson, because he is the greatest quarterback of all time. All right, favorite school memory, going to track meets last year. We need a new memory to lay down for your senior year, right? This will be it. All right, one goal for this year was to gain a deeper understanding of the environment. Dream job or career would be an environmental job. An advice he'd give to other students to be successful? Don't procrastinate. Get the work done. I love that. And then his AP Environmental Teacher, happens to be the one I got a quote from, and he says, "Gabriel Mendoza comes to 1st period AP Environmental Science eager to be challenged each day. Even though it's 1st period, he comes in with energy and enthusiasm. He has a strong interest in environmental science, and it shows. He investigates his lab work thoroughly and loves the challenge. Loved watching him play linebacker for the prospectors this year, as he brings the same energy to the grid. He plays with grit and energy. Congratulations. I'm also proud to be your principal."
Peralta Trail is not here because they had to stay for their students, so we'll recognize them next month, and I'm sorry about that, that we couldn't do that tonight, but there was no way for them to get here from the 60. So we're going to take pictures, and then before we take a break, we have a special presentation by a couple of principals and, we'll do that too, a couple of principals and the assistant principals and interventionists that we'll do. So right now, we'll do picture time, okay?
Congratulations.
Dr. Pay, which, what is this? What are we doing?
So what you have, what you have here is a, the second in a series of three series of Relay and the Professional Development that we send principals and assistant principals to do. Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Popolardo.
Community.
Over fall break, is this one on? Good. Over fall break on October 2nd, our leadership team that is presenting tonight, principals, vice principals, interventionists, and academic coaches, had the opportunity to participate in professional leadership training through Relay Graduate School of Education. This experience focused on one of the most important parts of improving our schools, learning how to lead teacher teams and analyzing student work with clarity and with purpose. Relay once again provided us hands-on, practical tools to help our teachers identify learning gaps, understand exactly what students know, and respond with immediate targeted instruction. It strengthened the way that we guide conversations around students' work so that those conversations are consistent and focused and ultimately beneficial for every student. The goal is simple, to ensure that student learning is understood, supported, and accelerated. The training we received on October 2nd deepened our ability to lead teachers in that mission. We are excited to bring this learning back to our schools in an effort to support quality instruction and to keep student success at the center of every decision we make. I'd like to introduce the team that went with us, and I think they're all here. 1, 2, 3, 4. Who's missing? Oh, Stephanie. Sorry, Stephanie. She got held up at Peralta as well. So tonight with me is Assistant Principal of Junior High, Tara Seymour. Kendra Porter, who is an Academic Behavior Interventionist at Desert Vista. Aubrey Jackson, who we saw so eloquently speak from Four Peaks. Stephanie Lucare, who is not here. Both of those last two are Academic Behavior Interventionists. And Melinda O'Barr, who is the High School Assistant Principal. And Mr. Russell Paperman. I believe he is the principal. Let's get started. All right.
Good evening. So we're just going to go through some of the slides with you. We're each taking a few. We're going to start with the objective. What was the purpose of this training? What were they there for? It was really just to help prepare us, leaders of the schools, to be effective with our data meetings and with our teachers, so that we, they know why they're there, and we can really help use that data to improve our lessons for our students and just the knowledge that they were receiving in targeted areas. So Gabe, it showed us just an engaging way to do a deep analysis of the students' work, of the data received, not only from our testing scores, but also from just data that they're picking up in the classrooms over classwork that's being done with those students. We identified procedures and conceptual gaps and how to do that with the material that teachers were looking at during the data meetings, and then also finding ways to reteach that's designed specifically for those gaps, not just, "Well, we did this last week, they didn't do well, so let's redo it all again." But those specific areas and those specific gaps of what they are missing, so that we're really targeting down that teaching, so that it's not just an overall again for them, but specifics to what they needed.
This one is, we want to make sure that we're preparing for the meeting, so making sure that we're coming ready, that we have student work ready to look at, that we know what the lesson materials were, and that we know who the team we are inviting, and that we know each and every participant's role in that meeting, and that we are well prepared for it.
Sorry, I brought notes. It won't be long. So we were talking about the, principals talked about last time, the know and show chart. We took away from that as well, how to unpack that standard, how to look into it deeper for students to understand what is truly to be taught. And analyzing the student work, we really liked because it's bringing in samples into the meeting and able to look at it from each different levels of students to see what they took away from the lesson and what do the teachers need to do better for the future, or where do they need to reteach to close those gaps.
All right, for the name it, this especially for us at the elementary level was our favorite part, our takeaway from the training. This is where you're going to close those learning gaps when you reteach what the students need to do to know. The know is what is the most important part of the standard that students must know. The show means what will I look for as the teacher in my student's response that demonstrates their understanding and their mastery of that standard. And then going with that, the do it. So you need to plan to plan out the reteach. You need to close that gap by selecting the appropriate lesson structure that will include what your students need to know to be re-taught, so that they can give the quick, correct response, so that you as the teacher knows that they have achieved that mastery in that standard.
Thank you. Sorry being so tall. So the takeaways are identifying the gap from an unpacked standard, being purposeful with the reteach strategy, and following up with the reteach data in the next meeting. This way, the students will have any gaps that they are struggling with to be filled, and then we can move on to the next part.
So the most important piece, how are we planning to implement? We talked about, we already have professional learning communities on our campus with our staff, and that's the best place to implement these. We already have those meetings, so coming in purposeful, making sure our teachers are prepared, that they can identify those gaps with us, and that we have a discussion about what are we doing to move forward? How are we planning to address those gaps? And that we're going to follow up with those, meaning the next professional learning community meeting that we have, we're going to address, how did those reteach happen? And how did they grow? And making sure that it's a full cycle circle.
So she said one word I think that I can highlight, and that's purposeful, and those are the discussions that we have consistently. The training provides us with a scope that we need to try to stick to. Now, yes, we can be flexible. We can still have those conversations, but going in with a plan and being able to really execute that plan, being consistent, and using purpose, as she said. So that is our presentation. Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Is it in email? Can you send it through the email?
I did. But it's okay. I can share. Don't we share it right now?
If you send it to, to us, we can pull it up.
Well, I've been getting beat by mosquitoes at work because of the rain. My legs are itchy. It's gonna say everybody's, yeah. I know, I'm like. I know. Well, I wore shorts yesterday because I did that workout class. No, we should, we should go do it. It's at six. It's fun. Yeah, we should go do it. We're talking about Zoom classes at then, I see.
Is that going?
Yes. Oh, oh. We're going to school. Yeah, we got school. Come before school.
Okay.
They did it.
No, I don't know. I shared it, I promise. It should be from Shay, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
I started from the end, I don't know if it just didn't.
Technology. It's not as easy as they think.
It's okay, we can just like act it out.
Here's coming right now.
It's coming right now. We want to see the pictures.
Yeah.
Here, they got it.
Right.
Yay. Oh, okay.
Okay, we got it.
Okay, so I'm going to be seeing the recap of what we've already done this year, so.
Oh, you have.
Oh, I have that on.
Does that thing?
Oh, okay.
Oh.
How do you? Oh. Okay, I think I did it.
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so our first main event of the school year was senior sunrise. And so here's some pictures of the senior sunrise event. And so basically, we got donuts and juice for all the seniors to enjoy. And we made all of the posters that you see up there. And so everybody just came out to have fun and take pictures and watch the sunrise together. And it was probably one of the most fun events, honestly, so far of the school year. So that was definitely really fun and, yeah. Okay, so homecoming events, we had a lot this week. Um, we had the spirit week, we had the, um, assembly, the football game, and homecoming itself. Um, we raised over three thousand dollars in sales for the homecoming tickets. And so we have some photos from the assembly and the football game. And, yeah, it was really good. Very nice. And then the senior night, um, was on Halloween. And so we basically made all the posters for the seniors and decorated the field. And so it's just a great way to celebrate all the seniors. There was not a lot of people there though, because it was Halloween, obviously, but we were there. So, yeah, and we had a lot of fun. And, yeah, it was cool. There you go. Okay, now I'm going to talk about the upcoming events. So we do have a blood drive coming up on December ninth. So the blood drive is not anything new. We've been having them for as long as I can remember. Think before I was born, I think we've been doing them for that long. But, um, I am the blood drive coordinator. So basically, basically, um, we just host the blood drive for the community and for the students, which is a great way just for, um, people to save lives. It's a really great thing that we do at the school. Um, our bonfire that we are planning to do on December 12th. We've done the bonfire in the past, hasn't really been a big success. But we're hoping that this year it will be great because, yes, we're super excited for the bonfire. But everyone comes and student council sells, um, smore, like packets things. And the students can do that. And then, um, yeah, it's a really just fun thing. Um, and then our last thing is prom. Um, prom was really fun last year. We did a lot of things. It's like homecoming with the spirit week and the assembly. Um, we didn't really have that many pictures from the dance because we were partying, obviously. So, um, but this is our lovely backdrop that we did last year. And prom was lots of fun. We had it at, um, oh, where was it? It was in Queen Creek. Yes, the Big Ten Cotton Gin. So, yeah, we were really excited for prom and excited for all the upcoming events that we've done. And that's it.
Well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, moving on to two point four Apache Junction Library Report. Megan?
I think she's stuck in traffic.
Oh, she's stuck in traffic still from the accident?
Yeah, we'll go, we'll invite her back next week.
Okay, we're just gonna table that. Onto public comments. I'm gonna read this to you, Jill, real fast. Speakers will have three minutes to speak so that everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity. P R S three eight dash four three one zero two H prohibits the governing board from discussing items which are not on the agenda. If the item you are addressing is not on the agenda, please do not expect the board to answer questions or discuss issues with you. Comments need to be district related. Welcome, Ms. Jill Broussard, our county superintendent. Come on up.
Wow, I'm the only one?
Yes.
So it was funny when you said, I'm reading this to you, Jill, I thought, what? Why is she talking to me directly? Because I'm the only one. Well, good evening, President Kimball, members of the board, superintendent, um, and looks like staff that's left here, right?
And some community.
None of what I'm going to, okay, just, none of what I'm going to say to you should be a, a big surprise. I'm Jill Broussard, Penale County School Superintendent. And I just wanted to come and give you an update on some of the things that, really, I came just to say hi, support you and your community. But, um, the things that we're doing in our office to, to help support the good work that you're doing here in Apache Junction. Um, and so just some of those highlights are going to be, we've been out recently for some professional development, um, at your schools. We've done some co-teaching, um, and I believe the focus on that was for teaching with resource teachers, co-teaching with resource teachers in the classroom, um, building better discourse, and active, the actively engaged classroom trainings. Um, something exciting that I don't know if you're, if everyone else is aware of, your board has been instrumental in helping me develop more board trainings for your school board. Um, I have held, we had two from A S B A, two trainings earlier this year. And then we held two here. And we're, I'm gonna continue to do more school board trainings throughout the year, but that's ob- obviously available to all the districts in the county. And if we could just get the rest of the boards on board, um, that would be very helpful to a lot of schools out there, I think. Because a good board makes all the difference. Which, by the way, you may have the best looking, or at least definitely the prettiest board, all women on this board. Um, and I think you may be the only board in Penale County of all women. So congratulations, ladies. Um, another big thing that we've worked with, um, our technology consortium, we developed a few years ago, and we were able to get a fifty million dollar grant that brought broadband out to all of the district offices for every school district in Penale County, along with the libraries, um, because we serve the library districts as well. Um, and that was fiber optics. I had to make note of that because that's a word I always forget. Isn't that funny? Um, but, so now we've kind of helped initiate a little bit of a partnership with Apache Junction in your school district to get that broadband out to each of the schools here in Apache Junction. Not every community is that lucky. So, um, you've got a great community that supports you and, and your, your kids. Um, and then, um, I don't know if you know, but we got a new phone system here at Apache Junction. And I want to say it was over three hundred phones, probably not a number you know off the top of your head. Yeah, that's a lot of phones. Um, but we were able to leverage our, um, relationship with, I believe it's Z O, and all the work that they did on the fiber optics to get free phone upgrades for all the districts in Penale County. So that's just another one that we were working on. And that actually was all that I had. You didn't think I'd make it, so.
Good job.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Okay, thank you, Jill. All right, onto, uh, information, where am I? And discussion items, four point one, school improvement plan principles. Who's starting? Nikki, who's first? Let's see. My thing doesn't click. Desert Vista.
All right, good evening again, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Papalardo, Dr. Broussard, um, yeah, all of us. It's been a long day. Okay, um, so we all received our school labels, and we were tasked to kind of look at, um, where are we at? Um, how can we continue to grow? How can we get to the next level? So that's kind of what we're all kind of presenting tonight. Oh, am I supposed to? All right, so again, just to remind you of the goals that we came up with at the beginning of the year. I don't think it's a good idea to change your goal in the middle of the year, um, because then you're not trying to shoot for the same target. So by May twenty-sixth, we will improve overall proficiency in reading by at least ten percent as measured by our district pre-to-post test through illuminate, which was what we use for our third through fifth grade, and math by that same percentage as well. There's our little friend Alex, okay. All right, so this is kind of where we're at so far. Obviously, kindergarten through second, we used Fastbridge, um, either e-reading or C B M R reading for second grade and E math and A math. We've only done the beginning of the year. We will do our middle of the year in January after we return, so we don't have those middle numbers yet. Um, we have done the pre-test, um, and then the, we just completed the November mimics. Um, I know my third grade data, especially for E L A, is not quite right because we still had several students that hadn't had a chance to finish yet, but that was what we had at the time. Um, we can see there is a little bit of growth. Um, our fourth grade E L A doubled, which is fantastic. We're definitely making some good gains there. We've had some backslide, obviously, in fifth grade E L A and math. And we're going to be working in our P L Cs to determine what's going on there and how we can, um, turn that back around. Um, I will share with you that we were, um, five point five seven, uh, points away from an A. So we were super, super close. Um, we were unable to capture points, um, for E, um, for our E L students this year because we need to have a minimum of at least ten students, and we had nine.
Oh, man.
So we were unable to capture any of our points, um, this year. So it is just the luck of the draw. If we don't have the students, we don't have the students. Um, we were able to capture our chronic absenteeism points there. So we did, um, we reduced from twenty-one point nine one to eighteen point three eight. Um, and we are on track to do even better this year. So we're excited for that. Um, and, um, we, um, did not get our science points because we were, um, we need to be at or above the state average, and that's another area that we are working on, trying to capture, um, those points because those students need to be proficient in that as well. Um, we did have, um, the max growth points, though, in our district. I was proud to say we had, um, we grew the most out of all of the schools. So I was very proud of that. We just need to work on that proficiency. Um, so again, we're working on improving that tier one instruction, um, especially with that small group instruction, looking at our data, where are our holes? How can we fill those holes and get them to where they need to be? We've got that leadership component with working on, um, student data tracking. We do have Molly coming back out for us, um, in December to do another half-day with us because we have new staff and our special ed staff wasn't, um, they didn't get that last little bit of training because they were all at a meeting. So they'll get that, they'll get that component too, so we can strengthen that piece. Um, we're introducing the six-minute solutions in third through fifth grade, so that does help incre- increase the fluency. Um, we're all taking part in the A Z I leader. Don't know a whole lot about that yet because we were just introduced to that. So we will have some upcoming trainings on that relay as the, they presented a little bit for us, working on those different pieces, like we just did the, um, well, these guys just did the, um, the meetings, that sort of thing. And, um, I do, I am fortunate enough to have, uh, Jolene King on my campus, so she's helping us with increasing that literacy component and getting our kids proficient.
Good evening again, Madam President, school board members, community, Dr. Papalardo and colleagues. Again, my name is Aubrey Jackson, and I will be sharing Principal Broxma's notes regarding the four peaks portion of the presentation. On this slide, you'll see a comparison between the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, when we earned a letter grade of an A, and the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, when our grade dropped to a C. As you review the chart, you can see that our areas of focus are student proficiency in reading and math, as well as student growth. On a positive note, we have been trending in the right direction in E L proficiency and growth, as well as growth for the students with I E Ps. Because of this growth, we are now officially out of school improvement status, which is an important milestone for our school. Slide eight breaks down proficiency data by grade level in math and reading. For example, our current fifth graders demonstrate a high level proficiency as third graders in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, seventy-six point twenty-seven percent in math and thirty-nine point zero six percent in E L A. However, when they were tested as fourth graders, proficient, proficiency declined slightly to thirty-nine percent in math and forty-two point forty-two percent in E L A. This data highlights the areas where we need to focus our efforts. On slide nine, you can see how our leadership team, consisting of administration, coaches and teachers, collaborated to create smart goals for both math and E L A. Within these goals, we developed an action plan detailing what we want to do as a school and community to increase student growth and why this is important, namely to raise our letter grade back to an A. Slide ten outlines our action steps in more detail. These include coaching teachers to improve instructional delivery, improving teacher practices and providing meaningful leader, learning experiences for every student by strengthening tier one instruction, hiring a new literacy coach to work with our K two teachers to strengthen literacy through the use of U Fly, implementing P B I S to reinforce positive behavior and accountability amongst our students. In closing, we have a clear understanding of what we need to do as a school and staff. Moving forward, we are focused on bringing autonomy back to the school for targeted professional development, providing tier two support through tutoring, continuing to implement best practices, as mentioned in the previous slide, to support both our school and our students. We are confident with these strategies in place. We will continue to make gains and work toward restoring our school to an A letter grade. Thank you, Mrs. Sunny Broxma. Thank you, guys.
Madam President, members of the board. Next slide, Leon. Thanks, next slide.
Dr. Papalardo, do you have the attachments?
Mine's all working.
Is it coming up on yours? Does none of the board members have the attachments?
Yes, all the PowerPoints are not working.
I don't know why.
It is on yours?
I wonder if I gotta sign out?
I wonder if it's an iPad thing?
You know why? They don't have PowerPoint in their system.
Oh.
That's why.
On the iPads, actually.
So what I can do, I can email it to them.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it, and I consider.
You can email it to them, right? Do they have it?
Yep, I can email it to them.
Yeah.
Yes, because the iPad doesn't have any PowerPoint.
So you've never had a problem before?
It was, uh, PDF.
PDF.
And PDF is, if you do PDF, it's always.
Yes, PDF is fine, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't project correctly. It's working this part.
Oh, I got you, I got you. Okay.
Thank you, Edna. All right, so, um, my initial goal was to just, just meet the people, be part of the community, make ourselves known and try to make some partnerships. Gave myself a, a goal of meeting at least two per month. It's actually simpler than that, but I'm gonna slow play it so I look really good at the end of the year. I think the big thing is not only building the relationships, but then continuing those and reaching back out. So, um, I didn't, oh, I did write the names down. So all of the names on there, um, I just continue to call back and say, I just wanted to thank you again for everything that we've, you've done for us. Um, you can take a look at the list. Master Gardeners Club, um, bottom right-hand corner, is going to start on our campus in January. It's going to work with our fourth and fifth graders. I had a phone call just out of the blue when we appeared in the paper, um, from Highlands Latin College School, uh, that wanted to know what can they do to help us in regards to, you know, bringing forth some curriculum? Because I think I made a moment or a notion in there that, um, it's not quite the curriculum that I'd like, but what can we, what can they do for us? So, um, working with them, um, they use Memoria Press, which I've, um, dabbled with a little bit anywhere. Their, the Latin program is quite well with them. A private donor today supplied my school with, uh, twenty pizzas. It's just, just those little things, you know, you, you put yourself out there a little bit. The community's great. The community wants to support. And we had a private donor for, um, uh, four cartridges for our copiers as well. So, um, little things strive for us to try to do better. Really look forward to, well, not really getting up to present about data and what can we do? Because I'd like to, to meet that head on. For me, that is great, but having a consistent teaching model over and over and over and just doing those things and not putting too much on your plate while you're teaching is, I think, the goal to success. Culture and consistency within those processes. So, um, I do look forward to that. I see it coming. I have one class that has testable, um, numbers. As Kelly was saying, you need ten. We'll have that. So highlighting those fourth graders this year, and hopefully I can get up and kind of share some information about them. But, um, I appreciate the opportunity to share that with you guys. Thank you.
Well, I'm not gonna feel bad about the PowerPoints not working because I brought copies.
I got, I got mine to work. But I'll take my copy.
Thank you.
Well, I, I went through Safari instead of Chrome. So if you go through Safari, I have no problems.
Okay. Good to know for future.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, so looking at the PowerPoint, it's really hard to read. So I created a data set with the, the most recent mimics. Um, the data set, um, is set to compare, um, where we are right now compared to where we, the students were at the end of the school year, uh, during the test from last year. So if you take a look at the, uh, numbers on here, um, it's all really good. If you look at the numbers, we are sur- either equal or surpassing where we were at, at the end of the year last year. If you look at the bold numbers, those are all, um, in the top, top two tiers. There is, uh, the, um, proficient and then the highly proficient, which is where we get our most points from. Um, so all those numbers are higher this year than they were last year, um, at the end of the year. So we're, we're ahead of the game by far already. Um, if you also look at the minimally proficient toward the bottom, um, that shows that, um, we're doing better by getting those numbers down significantly in each category except for one, which we actually broke even, exactly even, it was weird. So we want to look at the pathways forward. Our total points for the, uh, year were fifty-four. Um, we need six points for a C to move up, and then we need eighteen points for a B. Um, if you look at the bottom right of the chart, um, that's got the proficiency stability and the growth, which are our two biggest categories for every school. Um, we have available right now twenty-one and nineteen, and we're extra points that we can earn for this year coming up, or for this year we're in right now. And we are already going to that direction. If we just attain half of those points extra, uh, we'll be a solid B. So we're, we're headed in the right direction. Last year, we spent a lot of our time working on, um, school culture to try to get us ready to move forward. This year, we're mobilizing, moving forward. I, uh, I don't think you're allowed to ask questions for this one, but if you have questions later here.
Okay.
Um, so the school-wide plans, we're continuing adding instruction in writing. Um, we're also, uh, we have the reading and math lab for students that are struggling. Um, we have incorporated interdisciplinary, um, requirements into every content area, including electives. So teachers are doing their content area, but they're having the reading, writing and math components integrated into that. One way to look at it is if you're teaching a history class, um, you're gonna read primary source documents, you're going to write essays about it. So that's gonna be covering both history and sci- and English standards at the same time. Plus, they could also look at population growth, economics, things like that. But they're doing it very deliberately this year. So it's going to be integrating these things in every content area, including the electives. So it'll really help boost in real-life scenarios. Um, and we're also adding, um, we went school-wide this year with, um, the Avid strategy. So we have WICER, um, things are being done in classrooms all across the campus. Uh, action steps, uh, we have, uh, the P L C data dives. Teachers are looking at the, uh, the data they're getting, and they're, and they're focusing on the reteach as well as, um, enrichment. We turned to a grade-level team model this year. So, um, as you guys have already visited, um, we have a sixth-grade building, seventh-grade building, eighth-grade building. There is a limit, stars, some moving around just because we had to, and then the delectives. Uh, but those teachers work as a team to just, to, um, work with that M T S S team to look at what students need extra support, whether social-emotional support or academic support, so they can actually a- attack the problem early on. Um, they've been doing more small group instruction, targeting that. Uh, we're still doing our after-school tutoring. We also have partnership with Boys and Girls Club. They have tutoring, and the public library we have a partnership with, they also have tutoring. So there's a lot of opportunities for kids to get that extra help. Went over that, went over that. I covered that whole slide already. I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, we're gonna continue to build the P B I S behavior interventions. We'd like to go to tier two for second semester. Um, right now, where the kids are familiar with, um, the, you know, the positive rewards they get for positive behaviors and positive work. Last year, we dropped the out-of-school suspensions by seventy percent. So we're looking to continue with that trend. Um, and we're dropping our truancy rates as well. And, Ms. Ken?
Well, hello again. Thank you for having me to talk about letter grades and school goals and all this stuff I love. So please ask me lots of questions because I love this stuff. All right, so I started off by, um, you can go to the next page. So this is actually the wrong year, that one. So if you could go ahead a slide, that's it. That's twenty-two, twenty-three. So when I first started as principal, we were a solid C. Um, and then go back a slide. That's twenty-three, twenty-four. And we raised up to a B for my, um, second year. And then now go forward. And one more. There we go. So over the course of the three years, we've seen twenty points increase overall. We are still sitting at a solid B, but, um, one of the slides, I think I put, yes, we're, we're roughly six points from an A. And so I'm gonna review, um, some of these components that the high school was already dialed in on from our preliminary reports, but that we're, we're gonna continue our efforts of how to bring our letter grade even higher. So the next slide, I just dialed in here on the last two years because the grading metrics did change from the year prior. So I just, it made the chart messy and it wasn't pretty. So, all right, so you can see from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. That's right, okay. Um, our proficiency almost doubled. And so that's great, but it's still not high enough. It's not okay to have thirteen percent proficiency. We want our kids to graduate reading and writing, grade-level proficient. And so that was where we started our year focusing, was all proficiency. We do want our students to continue to grow, of course, but you can see they were already at, um, we did improve that. They were already up at almost eighteen. So really, we're dialing into proficiency. So our next area, you can see we received all, oopsie, oopsie, oopsie. We, you can see we received all of our E L points, and that's tremendous. That's really great efforts by my E L teacher, so I'm proud of that. Four, five and six-year graduation rates, we got all of those points, but we're missing the four-year graduation rate improvement. So, um, if you get five points, that means your letter grades, or, I'm sorry, your graduation rate stayed the same. So not a horrible thing, but if you improve that graduation rate one year, you get two more points. So you would get seven. And then if your graduation rate is ninety percent or better, that's when you can. And then if your graduation rate is 90% or better, that's when you can get your 10 points for that. So, of course, this is a continual goal of ours to increase that graduation rate. The cool thing about Apache Junction High School students is they do not give up and they get those diplomas, as you can see in the one line prior with our four-, five-, six- and seven-year graduation rate. But we want to get more students graduating, and for two years, we've kept, we graduated all the students on campus. It's our kiddos that we lose somewhere over the four years. How the state counts that is if they are in your cohort and registered at your high school. If they don't re-enroll at an in-state school, they count for you. So if we had a student that came freshman year for us and then dropped out, or say they went to Mexico to live with family, we still get dinged for their graduation. So we are working with a company called Grad Solutions, and they take RW list, which is student withdrawals, and they try to engage those seniors after they've left our high school. And so that is one way we're actively trying to recapture some of those kiddos that leave because we do graduate everyone on our campus, which is great. However, we've got to get all of the other ones earlier. And that also, there's a ninth-grade on-track success grant that we received, not this year, last year, for last year, that targets freshmen, that's ninth-grade on-track, because when you get students in ninth grade engaged and they don't fail those freshman classes, especially Algebra I, they're more likely to graduate. And so we're reapplying for that grant, and so we, I do anticipate receiving that to help, again, starting with ninth grade, retain those kids longer. All right, so college and career readiness report. We have only gone up point one, which breaks my heart in a million pieces because we are doing tremendous work in that area. However, there's a maximum number of points each student can earn. So if a student has taken AP classes, they've applied to college, they've done their FAFSA and other things, you can only, you top out, if you will. So we have engaged this many students. What we need to do is reach more for some of those college and career readiness indicators, and we're doing that. As I told, I shared, out of report earlier, our AP numbers continue to increase, and we have many, many of our students in AP courses, more than the last five years, I believe. So that is one way we're trying to engage and challenge more students and capture more of those CCRI points. One particularly challenging part of the CCRI report is FAFSA. We get a nice little chunk for all of our kids that complete the FAFSA process. That's a challenging report for families to go in and engage with if, A, you're not a legal resident and you don't want to fill out this form. You don't have to have a social security number anymore to do it, and that's new, but you used to, and it's very challenging for our, some of our students that are very transient to get this filled out. You have to have tax numbers, all kinds of things. So we continue, my fabulous academic counselors continue to engage families to try to get more and more to do the FAFSA, to complete their FAFSA. Right now, I believe in Pinnell County, we were number three or four of public high schools on the, it's like the Helios report of how many completed FAFSA's you have. So we're trending in the right direction, we're trending up, and we'll continue to pursue students and get this completed. Whew, I'm not even done yet. All right, you can see other growth there. Let's see, my next arrow, that is bonus points, okay? So you can get up to eight bonus points for the high school level, I believe. I have the business rules right here, one of these marks, bonus points. But anyways, we're missing, actually, you can get nine. So we're missing four, we're missing one bonus point for college and career because you, you actually have to increase the number of students entering a four-year university and/or enrollment in military. So we're working on those numbers, but we did not capture that one bonus point last school year. And then there's three bonus points that you can earn on this science assessment. So that, that one personally hurts my heart as a former science teacher, but we're going to look at and continue rethinking science instruction. So, I can talk to you about that all day if you like, you just let me know. Make an appointment, I'm here for you. So, that takes us then now, yes, you needed 82% for high schools for nine through 12 traditional models this year, and you could see we received 76.39. So we've grown a ton, and I'm super proud of the work my staff has put in. Six more points, and I have given you four categories where we are hoping to get many of those points to get us up to the A. It's hard, of course, to maintain an A, and that target keeps moving, to get an A or even maintain a B, but I believe we're ready for it. So the next page, and this one is tiny. We have changed our benchmarking at the high school, and I'm going to talk more about that. This proficiency distribution, which I'm sorry, it ended up so small, I can barely see it with all my glasses on. But this was the first attempt at a mimic exam, not an ASA mimic, which is what the high schoolers had been given on state standards. This is now an ACT-specific mimic. So we revealed to us some great encouraging news, one of which was our reading comprehension was high across, not high, it was good across the different grade levels, but our reading, basically our grammar conventions is very, very low. And if you talk to any one of my ELA teachers, they'll tell you that. I'm guessing if you talk to any high school ELA teacher, they'll tell you conventions are challenging right now. But that is that data. They were still tweaking the math bands from this first mimic, so I didn't have that to put in here, but we'll get that to certainly in the future. We just took this a week or so ago. All right, next slide. So we will continue with our beginning-of-the-year focus of improving tier-one instruction. And if I can just brag a little bit, my teachers are doing a phenomenal job. We've, we've been using Avid instructional strategies in the classroom, but thanks to some training by Pinnell County and your fabulous math teacher, Kelly, I think that's his name, right? Yeah, he is phenomenal. He came out and worked with almost my whole staff now on student collaboration, student discourse, questioning strategies. This is a, I'm not just saying this because you're here, it has been a tremendous resource free for my staff this year. So we are tapping into that, and it has really helped. And that's also the instructional strategy training. I am so proud of them. So some of my teachers that have only ever been notes deliverers, or what we call in education sage on the stage, they now are engaging students in other ways. They're using, for example, a jigsaw where each student is responsible for a piece of the information, and then the students report it back to each other. And by taking that, teacher, they're still there, they're still the guide, but the students engaging and owning this material is going to, I believe, help us increase our scores long-term. But that is great news. I think Dr. Papalardo, you can say that on your walkthroughs, we've seen less sage on the stage lately. It's been really encouraging to me as a principal. So, next slide. Okay, now, when we first saw our preliminary results, we knew proficiency was an issue. And so we have taken our prospector period this year, which is, remember, is a 30-minute block of time every day by grade level for students. We do use that time for college and career readiness, but this year, we have introduced grade-level intervention based on reading, writing, and math scores. And that can be quick checks, it could be this latest mimic. We have two teachers that work, and they put these interventions for all students together. So one thing, do you guys want me to stop talking?
No.
Is it too much? I can hear myself just one, but I love this stuff. So, one thing we noted is when we, we saw the ASAS scores for eighth-grade math, which is pre-algebra, coming into our ninth grade, we knew this wasn't just a few select students in need of math intervention. We knew our whole ninth grade really needed intervention. And that gave us this idea, every grade level needs certain interventions. So one day in prospector, they might just work on grammar. One day, we've actually been doing silent sustained reading in class, and some of our students have never done that before. Yeah, and so they're checking out library books, they're reading in class, et cetera. But these are all interventions that are happening inside of prospector, in addition to targeted tutoring and other structures we already had in place after school. But having it embedded in a school day ensures all students receive that extra support. We are going to look at expanding this model, oh, too much, Dr. P, too much, talking too much. We are going to start doing some rotations and some appointments and work some other things into that, into that prospector period now that we've had a whole semester of intervening, really, interventions. Okay. So lastly, one more slide. Woo, I still got it. All right, so, I meant like I'm still going. Okay, sorry. Okay, ACT and ACT Aspire. So this is the first year that we have given the mimic for readiness. So all of the statistics, all of the reports about post-secondary education will show you that you have to expose students to ACT questions for them to do well on the ACT. It is a very specific style of questioning. So yay, I'm so happy that we are now going to have mimic tests several times a year where they are going to see actual ACT questions. It's awesome. It gives them early test exposure to the questions in addition to timed tests. With our quick checks and our other benchmarks, they weren't timed. So now we're timing those to put that pressure that they feel during ACT and ACT Aspire. And, again, I mentioned it, but we are going to continue sustained reading and writing interventions because as we know, what our data shows is our students do really, really well at first and they taper off. They don't have that endurance for reading and writing. So we're going to continue to focus on those, and I think that's it. Is there one more?
There is one.
Oh, my gosh, okay. So we're still going to continue to expose college and career paths, again, increase AP classes and support for those students in there, and then my FAFSA nights and support. So those are already covered.
Do you want to share your, your students who took the ACT tests?
Do I want to share them?
The information? Didn't you say they, there was like 19?
That's the PSAT.
Oh, the PSATs.
Yeah, so our juniors, at first semester, we were able to invite in some of our honor students to take the PSAT. So you have to take the PSAT in your junior year to qualify as a national merit qualifier. And so that was something that wasn't happening when I came here, or they hadn't done it in recent years. So of our 19, I'm kind of drawing a blank. I know I shared it with you, but they, oh, now I remember, okay, sorry. They all scored above the national average, the 19. They were slightly below the state average, but above national, and I, I gave you one more statistic, I just can't remember it offhand, but they did really, really well, and they showed that that, that core group of our kiddos are hanging in, and they're doing really, really well. We have kids we need to continue to encourage and brag about, of course. Thank you. You have the technical manual here if you have any specific questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for either of the principals? Mrs. Ross? No? Mrs. Williamson?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No, I don't have questions.
Mrs. Lean?
I just, I just want to thank all the principals, and I know that you guys are trying really...
Yeah, are working hard.
I know that we'll get there. I know you guys are really exhausted and working hard.
Mrs. Lean?
No questions, I'm good.
No, I agree. I think you guys are doing a good job. I know you're working hard, too, and I know you're going to get there. I know you guys are overachievers, and we're going to get there. Dr. Papalardo, is anything you want to add?
I think that was a nice presentation for you, so you have a great idea of what every school is trying to achieve and how they're going to go about it. A little different at every place. And now, she'll send you the document in a way that you can have it and read it over and study that. Thank you. Great job, principals.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Mrs. Ross, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero. On to action items. Okay, we're going to go into executive session first. So would somebody like to make a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to ARS 384310387 to discuss the lease amendment with Grayson Motion and Old Four Peaks Building and Boys and Girls Club, an executive session pursuant to ARS 38341A1 to discuss the superintendent's evaluation?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.0387A7 to discuss the lease amendment with Grayson Motion at Old Four Peaks Building and Boys and Girls Club. And also, I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-341A1 to discuss the superintendent evaluation.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Mrs. Ross, seconds. Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes five to zero.
Six point one, approval of the gifted scope and sequence as presented. We went over this with Angie Thompson at the work session. Approval of this document will support cohesive program implementation and provide teachers and families with a clear framework for meeting the needs of gifted students. The gifted scope and sequence must be approved every three years and sent to the Arizona Department of Education. Somebody like to make a motion on the scope and sequence?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the gifted scope and sequence as presented.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto six point two, approval of the, of Prop 301 Performance Pay. We went over this also in the work session. Approval of this plan ensures compliance with state law, supports transparent allocation of funds, and reinforces the district's commitment to recognizing and rewarding staff contributions to student success. All schools voted for this, 100 percent. Any questions or somebody want to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Prop 301 Performance Pay.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto item six point three, approval of the principal and assistant principals' performance plan, which we also discussed in the work session. It aligns with the 301. Approval of this plan ensures a transparent and accountable process of distributing funds, pay, reinforce the students', uh, district's commitment to recognizing and rewarding strong leadership that positively impacts student outcomes. Any questions on that? Anybody want to make a motion? There was a rating of highly effective, effective, and developing.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the principals' and assistant principals' performance plan, pay plan.
Okay, we have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto six point four, approval of the vendor public records request. Approval of this fee structure ensures transparency, supports cost recovery, and aligns with allowable practices for processing extensive public record requests. So there's a $500 per vendor request fee. We also discussed this at the work session, any questions on that? Anybody want to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the vendor public request of $500.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto, where am I?
Six point five.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay. Approval of the contracted vendor to provide support for the technology department fiscal year 2425 in the amount of $35,769.40. Does somebody want to make an approval? And I think this is because it exceeds the threshold of the $25,000. Approval of this policy, I think this is the right one.
That's not the right one.
That's not the right one, okay. Any questions on that, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracted vendor to provide support for the technology department for the 2024-2025 in the amount of $35,769.40.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Okay. Item six point six, approval of policy 1302A governing board meetings and open meeting law requirements. This is the change of the agenda, which we've discussed. Any questions on that? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 1.302.A governing board meetings and open meeting law requirements.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto item six point nine, approval of the lease amendment with Grayson Motion and Boys and Girls Club. Somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease amendment with the Grayson Motion and the Boys and Girls Club.
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And I'm, I guess I'm gonna, just kind of like a split. Should I abstain?
It's not yes, it's a four yes and one abstain.
Yeah. So I'll just abstain.
Yeah.
Well, it's just I can't vote on the Boys and Girls.
Right. So you just abstain.
I abstain on the Grayson motion, but yes on the Boys and Girls Club. Okay. That motion passes. Four to one abstention for Grayson motion and five to zero.
You could vote, and then I'll just put a comment of you abstaining.
Thank you. You got it. Information items, request for future agenda items, anyone?
Can I have sped be put on the agenda again?
It's on the work session.
Okay.
Yep.
And we have the, uh, gift donation, the auxiliary gift.
It's on there. Anything else?
Yes, financials, gifts, donation, and the three categories.
Anything else, ladies? I know I, I wrote some notes, but I don't remember where I put them. I can't remember what I wrote down, but anyway.
You know yourself, Mrs. Kimbrel.
I know. I can't, I'm a mess over here. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, would you make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion, would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Williamson seconds, Mrs. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
And on the yes, that motion passes five to zero, we're adjourned.